Good evening. Before we start our meeting tonight, our city clerk has a broadcasting announcement to make.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As of June 15th, the City of Grand Terrace reopened its public meetings. Therefore, tonight's meeting of September 22nd is now open to the public. Please be advised that face masks are required, social distancing will be practiced, and occupancy limits will be enforced. Additionally, pursuant to Section 3 of Executive Order N 2920 issued by Governor Newsom on March 17th, tonight's meeting will also be conducted telephonically through Zoom and broadcast live on the city's website and Channel 3. If you'd like to participate telephonically and speak on an agenda item, you can access the meeting by dialing star 671-669-900-9128, enter meeting ID 817-3989-2380, and enter password 346511. You will be placed in the waiting room muted until it is your turn to speak. You may also submit your comments by sending them to ccpubliccomment@grandterres-ca.gov. The City of Grand Terrace thanks you for taking all precautions to prevent spreading the COVID-19 virus.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. For those of you who are with us tonight in the chambers, if you desire to address the City Council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak form available at the front entrance and present it to the city clerk. Speakers will be called upon at the appropriate time, and each person will be allowed three minutes to speak on an item. So at this time, I call to order the regular meeting for the City of Grand Terrace for September 22nd, 2020. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin.
(inaudible)
Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen?
Present.
Councilmember Hussey?
Present.
Councilmember Robles?
Here.
Mayor Protem Wilson?
I am here.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. We do not have a special presentation tonight. Do we have any reordering additions or removal of items from the agenda, Mr. City Manager?
No, we do not, Mayor.
All right, thank you. So we will move to the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the City Council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any requests to remove items at this time? Seeing no requests, I will entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Robles, second by Councilmember Allen. Madam City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussey?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right, so we have an opportunity for public comment for items not on the agenda. Do we have any requests to speak during this time?
Not for public comment.
All right, so we'll close public comment. We have no public hearings, we have no unfinished business. So we will move to our new business, item number six on our agenda, agreement between the City of Grand Terrace and the County of San Bernardino for installation of a dropbox at City Hall, and that will be presented by our city clerk, Deborah Thomas.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council. Deborah Thomas, City Clerk. Before you this evening is an agreement between the City of Grand Terrace and the County of San Bernardino for installation of a ballot dropbox at City Hall. This report supports goal number one, develop and implement successful partnerships, and goal number five, engage in proactive communication. In previous election years, the City of Grand Terrace has served as a mail-absentee ballot drop-off location. The County of San Bernardino's Elections Office would provide the city with a cardboard ballot box that would allow residents to drop off their ballots, and the election office would periodically pick up those ballots. The County Elections Office this year has requested that City Hall serve as an official ballot dropbox location. In place of the cardboard ballot box, the county will install a permanent, secure ballot dropbox which will be located outside of City Hall on the west side of the building. The county is going to incur all the costs of maintenance of the dropbox as well as the installation. Right here next to the light, to the right-hand side, that's going to be the location on where that box will be installed. The boxes, the official ballot box, will look similar to a FedEx box and will be accessible via ADA. They will have to park in the handicap zone, and they can roll over, but they'll still be able to access dropping off that box, excuse me, that ballot. Approval, excuse me, during this time that they have the box, they're going to periodically be coming in, they will retrieve the ballots pretty much every day beginning October 19th, and it's just making it more accessible. They're not going to have as many polling locations this year as they have in the past, so they wanted to make sure that since everyone is going to be getting a mail ballot this year, that they have an opportunity to drop it off into this more secure ballot box. At this time, staff is asking for approval of the agreement between the City of Grand Terrace and the County of San Bernardino for the installation of the ballot dropbox, as well as installing it in the location that's been identified, and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement. That is the end of my staff report. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Mayor Protem has a question, and then Councilmember Allen.
Madam Clerk, I'm going to just make a suggestion. I know we don't have a lot of control over these things, but considering our history, I think it'd be a good idea if they put a few boulders, just steel posts, four inches round, filled with concrete around the box so that they don't have to come back out and replace it. You know, it'd be just like a transformer box. If it was in harm's way, it might make the most sense.
We can certainly approach the registrar of voters' office and make that suggestion.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm real glad the Mayor Protem, Mayor Protem mentioned that. I had not, because my suggestion, it was pretty much, not really a suggestion, it was going to be a question towards my fellow council members and also to you, Madam Clerk. Has the library drop-off box ever been damaged by being hit by a car while somebody's trying to maneuver through the drive that we know of?
Personally, I cannot answer that question. I am not aware of the, and you're talking about the book, the book drop-off location out here?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy might be able to answer that for you.
Over the five years since I've been here, we have not had an incident.
Yeah, because my, my other question, the question that I actually had wanted to ask was, rather than setting this box back away from the curb and making, making a disabled driver park, hopefully the spot's available, maneuver out of their vehicle, and come down there. Could this box be put up front on the curb similar to the library box so that they, that would not, that would not be necessary for them to do that?
In that particular location, that would not work due to the ADA compliance that we need to make that walkway accessible to the stairs in City Hall. Our building and Safety Division had identified that that did have to sit back.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there a reason that that spot was chosen instead of to the south near the handicap parking?
The city manager and I had a discussion believing that a lot of the locations that this ballot box is being placed at is by the library, most of the county libraries, and I think based on that information as well, we've thought that that library is right there. We thought that might be a beneficial place to have it, as well as there's a light right there that can light up the area a little bit better in case somebody does decide to drop off in the evening, but we can certainly reconsider that if that is something that the council would like.
I was just curious. Any further questions? Okay. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Jeffrey McConnell?
Jeffrey McConnell, Grand Terrace. If anybody's followed any of the local Facebook pages they've known over the years, that people have posted, including myself, about the mailbox over at the Smart Time Market with the sticky substance on the inside, multiple mail theft, even stolen that mailbox in the past, the whole thing. It's just not safe to put it outside. My suggestion, put it inside by the library. I mean, if people can't find a way for somebody to drop it off during daytime hours, business hours, it's just not safe with all the national issues going on right now with the mail and the fraud. It's, it's not safe. I do, I would suggest, I'm going to suggest to everybody that they do absentee or something, or just drop it off on the election day. It's just not safe out there. Lights don't seem to stop thieves. Cameras don't seem to stop thieves. This is a really very touchy election year. The talk of fraud is constantly in the news, the talks of theft, videos of people stealing and dumping large amounts, or finding large amounts of mail-in ballots in, in post offices after the primaries are over with. I would not leave it outside. As a matter of fact, if it's left outside, I'm going to suggest to everybody in the paper not to drop it off there unless it's early in the morning, because it looks like the schedule is for a pickup every day, but I'm still going to suggest you put it inside, because I don't trust somebody will steal it.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Dr. Ken Stewart?
Ken Stewart, Grand Terrace, Blue Lupine. Just have two quick questions. How are we going to secure the box from theft? I know a couple of council members and Mr. McConnell kind of mentioned that a little bit, and what will the communication be in regards to telling the city and the community members about this opportunity to be able to come and drop off our mailing ballots? So those are my two questions.
Thank you, Dr. Stewart. Madam City Clerk, do you want to address those questions?
The county will be picking up ballots every single day beginning October 19th. Most individuals will not even be receiving their ballots until about the third, second week in October. At that time, when they anticipate that the residents will be receiving their ballots, they know that those ballots will begin being dropped off, they will be picking them up at 7:00 PM every single day, except for Election Day, it will be 9:00 PM. County is the only one that can access that box. They have assured us that it is a strong box and is very secure, and they will be retrieving those daily. With regard to placing it in the library, this is a type of box that's like a FedEx drop-off box. It is a little too large to be placing it into the library. It is secured to the cement, and it is, you know, they can't place that in the library. It is the county's suggestion and their agreement is to have this placed outside so that their employees have easy access to retrieve those ballots.
And the other question was how will voters know where the dropbox is?
The San Bernardino County Elections Office has a Look Up My Polling Place tool. We also will be placing that when they have it available, the link on our city's website under our elections page, and when they go to Find My Polling Place or where these, to locate the boxes, they're, they will click on that link, and they're all listed for the city, and we really only have the one. We will have one or two polling, physical polling places in the city as well.
Okay. Thank you. Is that the last request to speak on this item?
I do see two phone calls that I believe may be for this item as well. Maybe not, they're not unmuting it, and I can't unmute it as well.
Okay. Then at this time, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council for consideration of a motion and deliberation. Councilmember Allen, and then Councilmember Robles.
So I just wanted to ask if, in this discussion, if that area is covered by a security camera?
I believe it is, but I can go back and check. I know that we do have a system around entire city halls, I believe that's covered.
Okay, thank you. I'll second the original motion.
Was there a motion made?
There wasn't, then I'll make-
So you're making the motion?
I am, then.
Thank you so much. So your, your motion is staff recommendation?
Yes, it is.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Robles?
And I'll second that, and my, my concern about this is that, given the environment and the integrity that we're having with EDD fraud and all this other, that it's not preferable, but the registrar of voters is pretty much in charge of this, I would just say that we need people to know that you can track your ballot, and I would just say that we strongly push the tracking mechanism. Thank you.
And I agree that with your track your ballot and something happens to it, please let the registrar of voters know as soon as you can. So they are insisting that this come here, or we can, we can say no?
We can say no.
Yes.
But that, but that creates a hardship for our, our voters in the city.
Yes, Mayor, and if you remember, historically, the city clerk has always had a box, a cardboard box, that City Hall could drop it off. They will no longer do those boxes.
They will no, no longer, okay. Any further discussion on this item? Councilmember Hussey?
So speaking of tracking, how will the residents know that their ballot was picked up and secured, and is it because there's a box there?
I can ask the county if they would mind if we post, we could post like the schedule of the days that these are going to be picked up, so they can, they'll know that the day that they've dropped that off, they can look at and see that that's-
Well, the reg, the registrar of voters, and I actually, I heard a presentation by the registrar of voter. He said they will have a tracking mechanism, that you can, you can actually follow your ballot, as, as Councilmember Robles was talking. When she said "track your ballot," she meant they have an app to track your ballot.
And we could place that somewhere on the box, just so that it's like, you know, they can identify it right there when they drop it off, they can see that and then download it.
Do they know how long it's going to take to count the ballot after November 3rd, if people drop off?
Well, they don't certify the election for approximately 30 days after November 3rd, because they are continuing to count ballots beyond the election date with respect to military overseas ballots that are coming in, provisional ballots, those types of things in the past, so it does take a while for them to-
Does this box airtight, so they can vandalize and light a fire or something in there? Do you know?
I can't say with 100% certainty that it couldn't be vandalized.
All right, thank you.
All right, will you call the vote, please? We have a motion by Councilmember Allen for staff recommendation, and a second by Councilmember Robles.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussey?
No.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item seven is the approval of resolution approving change orders to TSR construction for Grand Terrace-Mountain Vernon intersection improvements, which adjusts quantities, adds extra work, and therefore increases total compensation by $107,858.23, and then also authorizing city manager to sign such change orders. Mr. Craig Bradshaw, interim Public Works Director.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. Let's just start with a little bit of a background. In 2016, the city received this grant for $435,000, and it's for safety improvements at five intersections along Mountain Vernon corridor. And December of 2019, we received our E76. That basically gives us the authority to proceed toward bidding and construction, and estimated value is $325,000 for the construction. And on the right is the basic breakdown at that time of how the funds would be spent. The city selected H.R. Green as the project manager, Gary Yao. He's a construction services manager. He acted as the project manager for this contract, and Alan DeWitt was infrastructure inspector. They are zooming in right now, so if we have questions of them, or if there's something I can't answer, we'll have to have them come in and help out. Just to get you, help you to understand the type of improvements we're talking about, we're enhancing the crosswalks by using a, the ladder striping type of design. We have some flashing stop-ahead signs that have been installed, some oversized stop signs and some stop bars, and that's fairly typical of most of the intersections. With the exception of, this is DeBerry Street on Mountain Vernon, it's really just enhanced crosswalk. That's all that's being installed at that location. And then at Pico Street, there's a full improvements that we're just discussing about Canal Street with advanced flashing stop-ahead signs, enhanced crosswalks. Now, I digress slightly, because I believe one of the council members had a question about speed tables of these locations. They're called crosswalk tables, or raised crosswalk tables, or speed tables, and, and in many cases, they kind of resemble a speed humps, depending on where they are placed. They, the idea is to make the pedestrians stand out more and make it very obvious for motorists. There's a number of things we have to really consider when installing these. We have to consider drainage, and if we can make them work with the ADA, American Disabilities Act, and emergency access on primary roads usually disallows this type of installation, and also street classification. If you're a residential street or a residential collector street, they're typically acceptable, but as soon as you start getting on main thoroughfares where you have typical emergency access or truck, or truck access, they really do not work very well, so that's one of the reasons that you're not seeing these on Mountain Vernon. One of the more difficult intersections was Canal Street. This is our inspector's first markup. There are, there is a lot of severe distress in the asphalt. We have some handicap ramps that are not ADA compliant or do not exist on the, on the south side of the intersection, and with, actually some asphalt improvements, we're able to make the ADA handicap ramps on the northerly side acceptable, but it's really a pretty rough street. I've just got a couple of slides, and they probably don't do it justice on quite how bad this location is, but there's actually locations that would create a trip and fall or create a problem even just crossing the street, and they also, the large lips next to the handicap ramps really make the ramps ineffective as far as handicap accessibility. And so, one of the big improvements that's, one of the big causes, fixing these intersections that have the serious asphalt problems. This is Pico Street. There was a change order that was issued that repaired a number of these locations, and that work's been done at Pico and Mountain Vernon. They have done deep patch, where they actually removed asphalt down so deep, replaced it with new asphalt, and then there's also grind and overlay has occurred at this intersection, and it's kind of a patchwork to straighten out the problems. And we want to go back in with the thermoplastic type of striping. It lasts much longer and is much more, and stays reflective for a much longer time, and so another component of this, these change orders has to do with slurring the entire intersection after we've done, after we've completed the asphalt repairs, so that the entire intersection is a dark black, then we're, then we are applying the, the thermoplastic to the dark black intersection. All right, here's another picture of another corner. This is the remaining funds that are available. Under construction engineering, there's $398,300, and $22,000 of that is going to construction engineering, and that leaves us, considering the contract award of $268,350, that leaves us to the $107,950. So there's roughly $108,000 of available funds remaining. The proposed change orders are as follows, and I've listed these as far as the way they're listed on the change orders themselves. 1.0, the reason it's 1.0, that's actually unit prices that are being used for remove and replace. We have a square foot cost, and it came to the $8,232. Additional asphalt mill and overlay, roughly $30,000. The streetlights that we received, we have solar streetlights, and they did not have mast arms, so we included mast arms, and they're on back order right now. That added $7,500 to the cost. The foundations that were shown on the plans for these streetlights were insufficient. They really don't meet the requirements for the public right-of-way, and that added another $6,200. Those foundations have all been installed. There's additional concrete curb for ADA, $2,700, and then payment and performance bonds, there's an additional bonding cost with the contractor. And then on change order number two, and most of this work on change order number one has been completed, so roughly $62,000 worth of the work has been completed. And change order number two, it's the Canal Street crack and slurry seal, there's a lot of roadwork, it's, that's $10,400. Then all the intersections, that's the thermoplastic and additional striping, $6,500, and then crack and slurry seal of the three intersections on Mountain Vernon, so they have a uniform appearance for the thermoplastic. That's another almost $29,000. It's a total of $107,858. Those are the two change orders we are proposing. And with this resolution, we are making findings. I think it's important to go through these, just so it's clear that this isn't typical coming to change orders of this magnitude, but we feel like that it is necessary and it's really prudent for the city to do this. Basically, change order number one is complete, except we've got back ordered streetlight poles, streetlight mast arms. Change order number two, it's important and necessary to complete the installation of the enhanced crosswalks. To really have the best product, we need to do the street work, and we want, we would like to do the thermoplastic, plastic striping. The contract work proposed on change order number two work, if approved, will be completed in October, and it is just not really practical to rebid the small amount of remaining work, which will take about a minimum of three months to turn it around and for it to be rebid. And item number four, if the project were rebid, then the cost of procurement, preparation of bid documents, the bidding process, and the cost of work will likely exceed the available HSIP funds. This staff time will push that way over the limit. There are a limited number of firms that would be interested in a small contract. Item number six, the contractor has used the agreement's unit prices where possible, and has provided reasonable change order prices for work requests requested. And item number seven is Caltrans Local Assistance, which oversees the use of federal funds, found the use of the existing contract acceptable for completing the work. And our recommendation is to approve the change orders and to approve the resolution and the findings, which will increase the total compensation to $107,858, and to authorize the city manager to sign such change orders, and that concludes my staff report.
Thank you. I have two questions with respect to Canal Street. How will these changes that are being installed help to alleviate the running of the stop sign that's there? And I understand that there are flashing lights, but that has not stopped people from running those stop signs as they're heading north and then down the hill. And then my second question is, how are we going to, how are these changes going to keep trucks that are oversized from traversing that hill as well?
Okay. The stop sign one's a difficult one. Without selective enforcement and policemen giving tickets, that's, that's what it really takes.
Or other traffic- Or other traffic calming measures.
Other traffic calming measures. The struggle is, is which traffic calming measures do you use that would actually have people stop? We, we have this struggle when there's low volumes on streets, and there's no apparent reason to stop. The people have a tendency to do the California stop.
Or, or they don't even slow down. They just blow through it.
That's a serious concern.
And if we're putting in, if we're putting in additional pedestrian crosswalks, they're going to get hit, because it's closer now to, to where these people are running these stop signs. So, you're, you're putting one on the north side where it didn't, or on the south side where it didn't exist before. And if you have people just not even slowing down and driving through there, that's not a, that's not a good combination. So, I, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
When looking at that intersection, what about it enhanced the safety by putting in that new crosswalk?
Well, the crosswalks are much more visible with the striping. And that's the main purpose. And with the flashing signs that there's a stop ahead, it makes it very obvious, and the signage, signage is appropriate, it's oversized. If somebody, if, if the police, if sheriffs are out there, they can easily give a ticket. There's no argument that their, people are not seeing the stop signs. I, I think that's, that's normally what you do, you make things more visible. I, I'm not sure if we have a camera at that location, and we need to look and see regarding signage, make sure people know that we are actually recording what's happening. Now, that's, that is not enforceable, although some communities will take that, and if they can read a license plate number, they will send letters. That's entirely the sheriff's department in their, in their control. But those, those are the kind of options that we have. Yeah.
All right. And hence, if, if there was a raised crosswalk where people have to stop anyway, it slows them down considerably.
Well, it becomes like, it's like a speed bump. It's part of the dilemma.
Right. And it keeps trucks, which you said, it makes it hard for trucks to traverse the hill.
It makes it harder for trucks.
And, and we don't want them going down that hill anyway.
And it makes it harder for emergency services.
Yeah.
If somebody blows through the intersection and they become airborne and they lose control, there's a question of liability that may be raised.
Okay. So, you think they would, you think they would do that?
Right.
You think they would? All right. Thank you, Councilmember Robles.
Just for, for me visually, are we slurry sealing the full street?
The intersection area and back a distance.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, because this is kind of still a patchwork thing then?
The, the street will be, it's going to be milled and deep patched in those areas that smoothed it out, and then it'll be sealed, so we have a uniform surface for the striping.
All right, thank you. Okay, Mayor Protem, and then Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for, I, I'm, I'm very happy that we're going to catch this before we start work. Ordinarily, road guys have a tendency to get started and then bring their change orders out. And the change orders usually exceed any amount of money of the funding. I think it's good that we've caught this before that. But maybe for future reference, it's, it seems strange to find out what needs to be done after the bidding process. So, I'm concerned about our precautions in bidding so far as walking the job with each one of the contractors, especially when we have a limited amount of contractors. I, I'm concerned because this should have already been included in a scope of work, albeit, the plans were deficient, and there's no excuse for that. But then, oftentimes, civil engineers get away with that. But I think it's good for us to have at least something below the line that, that coins these things to keep the contractors honest. And I appreciate the contractor working along with us and not scraping to the bottom of the barrel for this extra work. So, that's all I've got, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Allen.
Thanks, excuse me, thanks, Mayor. So, my question has to do, it tails in off of the mayor's point, which is, in the work that's going to be performed on this intersection, and the product that's going to be used to rehabilitate this intersection, is there a difference in the work and the cost and quality of the product if it's a, a road surface where heavy trucks are not allowed and only light vehicles? You know, like under seven tons? Single axle, that sort of thing, which is what the slope is. But we know heavy trucks use it. So, I would apply that, that, all that damage to that intersection that you spoke about and showed pictures of, I would say that the heavy truck traffic is responsible for a substantial amount of that. So, are we planning and are we paying and resurfacing for that? Or are we just doing it for light traffic? Or is there a difference at all?
Yeah, the, the repairs that we're doing, we're repairing areas where we're doing the deep patch, we're taking it all the way down to base and repairing it. There's a, the majority of it has to do with a, it's a grind and, and overlay. And then there's slurry for the rest of the intersection. So, it's really, for the most part, it's remedial work.
I mean, because we know that the heavy trucks are just going to, if we're just doing a light.
Correct.
You know, are we, are we just throwing, throwing, what do they call, what's the saying? Throwing bad, bad, I need a bad project? And my, my other point has to do with what she, she was saying also. Can we not, can we put lights, push button light, crossing lights at that intersection?
You, you can install pedestrian push buttons, and that's, that ends up being a, it's a type of signalized intersection at that stage. And when you, when you install, typically, you'll have a pedestrian crossing at a location where you have heavy traffic in one direction, which would be Mount Vernon, and extremely light traffic on, on the opposite direction. But typically, they're not at four-way intersection. When you do the signal warrants, you're probably going to find out a full traffic signal is probably what's necessary in that location.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Mr., uh, thanks, Craig.
Councilmember Hesse.
Just a question for the lieutenant. You know, they're spending all this money on, you know, to improve this and stuff, and of course, the, the main way to stop this is the, of course, is enforcement of traffic tickets. Do you know, in those locations, how many stop sign violations do we previously have in like, in a given week, offhand?
Good evening, sir, and city councilmembers and mayor. That particular statistic, I don't have the, off the top of my head. I could do some research into that and see what proactive enforcement, what traffic stops have been made in that area of that intersection. Hard to tell. There is going to be some variance in there, because when the stop is actually made is where that location is actually identified. Just as an example, you know, a few weeks ago, I, I mentioned to the council that I had spent some time in the city working patrol. And on a particular day, I'd sat at that intersection with a deputy enforcing that intersection. We made probably eight or 10 stops for people that had, for all intents and purposes, run the stop sign. And, and there were some that ran it a little bit more egregiously than others, but we did write some citations for that. Some of those stops didn't actually happen though, until we reached maybe Barton, you know, as an example, by the time we were able to catch up to the car, get through other traffic, and make the stop. So, I, I will tell you that it, it may not be 100% collect all of the data, but I can get you some, some information that might help you with that, in stating that, that we had initially tried to enforce some traffic at that intersection, even though the stop may have occurred at a different location.
Because, you know, like the mayor, you know, I walk a lot too, and you do see, you know, the people just going right through. They only do California stops. It'd be nice if they did a California stop. They just blaze right through it. And the problem is, you know, we're, as a council, we want to make sure our residents are safe, but we also want to make sure how are we going to stop it? I mean, there's no guarantee on this, you know, people going right through the stop sign. I mean, people fly through here, but we just, I'd just like to know that we know that the sheriff is enforcing that and doing a, you know, because way back when, they, the sheriffs used to be at every corner, and that was a thing, don't come to Grand Terrace because they're going to give you a ticket. Now, like what Councilmember Allen said, one of our biggest issues is, you know, going down the hill and stuff. So, I just want to make sure if, how many tickets are written out, and the council's going to keep on doing this for our residents, but I just want to make sure that you guys are aware of it and see what your standpoint is in helping the council maintain the, the safety of this.
Sure. Well, I, I do fully understand how serious this issue is, and I'm, I'm personally familiar with it. I, I will get some statistics, and I can either report back at the next city council meeting, or I can provide them to the city manager to provide to you. But, but I will tell you that it is something that we take very seriously, and, and even today, as a matter of fact, reiterated some of these priorities to the deputies that are assigned to Grand Terrace. And specifically, speed and stop signs and stoplights and moving violations are very, very high up the list of, of things that we want them to concentrate on with regards to traffic. And, and of course, issue citations whenever warranted. So, that, that information is being passed down. And I'm sure you'll see, hopefully, some indication of those efforts at the next meeting when perhaps the city manager reports the monthly statistics. And I would probably believe that we would see an increase in the number of citations issued.
Okay, well, thank you. Because I know we have a lot of seniors that leave the senior complex, and they're wheelchair-bound and stuff, and that's our biggest concern right there is, you know, we don't want them to get hurt.
Certainly.
Anybody get hurt.
No, we don't want anybody to get hurt.
Well, thank you for answering.
Thank you, Lieutenant Lane. Councilmember Robles.
Yeah. It'd be helpful to have a little map for, for us on where these streets are. But we have some money for the impacts that the High Grove developments are. And we really need to do something about having a, a traffic signal and something a little bit, I don't know why we're not using this, that money yet, is the only comment I'll have to make.
Right. Any further questions at this time? All right. Public comment? Thank you. Dr. Ken Stewart.
Ken Stewart, Grand Terrace, Bulupine Circle. Has the city considered putting stoplights along Mount Vernon? I know that may cost some money, but I know that will definitely deter traffic coming down Mount Vernon from High Grove down to Colton. So, have this, have the council considered that? And that will help with reduction of traffic, that will help with reduction of fatalities or accidents? So, just a, pose a question to the council.
Thank you, Dr. Stewart. Are there further requests to speak during this time?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Close public comment, and bring it back to council for consideration of a motion and further deliberation.
Motion for approval.
I have a motion for approval of staff recommendation by Mayor Protem.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hesse. Is there further discussion?
I just want to say that I support what Councilmember Robles was saying, like, why, why can't we have a light there? And, but that's all, and that's all I just want to say.
Thank you. All right. Please call the vote.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hesse?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
I was going to say, you know, I suffered my spinal cord injuries on that road, and I saw a serious accident from all the people dodging in there. And I'm going to bring this personal thing to say, let's, let's do something more comprehensive. I vote yes.
Mayor Protem Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor McInnes.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right, do we have, we have no request for future agenda items by the city council. City Council Communications, beginning with Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm very glad, Mr. City Manager and Mr. Public Works Director, to see all the little white stripes all over our broken asphalt. And that tells me that those potholes are going to get fixed real soon, right? I mean, Mount, yeah, Barton Road is at city limits, you know, I mean, it's pretty, pretty rough. So, but I just want to say, we have a few more days to anybody watching, there's still a couple of days to do the census, if you haven't done it, folks, please do the census. And also, if you're not registered to vote, it's real simple and easy. I left a bunch of these down at Gino's. You can contact me. I've got some. They can go to the registrar's office and get them yourself. Please vote. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Bill Hesse.
I have nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvia Robles. All right, thank you. Mayor Protem, Doug Wilson.
Mayor, just a reminder to the council, we do have on our, on our priorities list a circulation plan that will help us, and help us answer the question the citizens have brought up in relation to traffic control and so on. Nothing ever gets installed greater than a stop sign that, without a warrant. And a traffic warrant is necessary, that's a legal document. So, once that traffic warrant has been issued for a particular traffic calming, stopping, or whatever device, then we can move on doing greater mitigation. But for the time being, we are heading towards a circulation element study that will help us reconfigure our overall traffic situation, hopefully by the end of the year.
Thank you for that reminder, Mayor Protem. And I do not have a report tonight, so we'll move to city manager communications. Mr. Harold Duffy.
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, G. Harold Duffy, city manager, I have an update for the council on a couple First, Mayor and council, I wanted to give you an update on coronavirus information that we have. And so, this is the, these are the latest numbers for San Bernardino County. There's a fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three cases, COVID-19 cases in San Bernardino County. That's an important number, because that's usually the number that people talk about, the total cases. But as you go through this report, we'll show you cases that have been, are still active and are no longer active. And so, there were nine hundred and eight deaths in San Bernardino County. There were, but in, in, in Grand Terrace, there were three hundred and ten cases specifically in Grand Terrace. And then there are COVID-19 associated deaths in Grand Terrace was twelve. And then, the total of COVID-19 associated deaths in, no, that's, that's not correct. That should have been, the numbers are off. That should have been twelve for the total number of cases and, and deaths in Grand Terrace.
So, so the deaths were three thousand, two hundred and...
Yeah, it should, it should be the, that should be the, twelve is the, is the number there, death. This is not correct information down below.
All right, so how many total cases have we had in Grand Terrace?
Three hundred and ten total cases.
And we've had twelve.
We have twelve deaths so far.
Have, have died. And the three thousand, two thirty-five is what?
I think that's just an error in terms of information.
Okay.
Carried over. I'm sorry about that. So, next, we have information that nail salons can open, and the state modifies rules for restaurants serving alcohol. And so, what's happening now is that effective today, nail salons are going to be able to be open again. And the state's also reconsidering that restaurants are able to have alcohol transactions separately from meals. And they're also going to be reevaluating whether bars are truly serving meals. So, maybe chips and salsa is not a meal, and so you can, you can no longer be open and fall into that restaurant environment. So, that's one of the things they're trying to clarify. In addition, so these are the, kind of the new tiers on which the, which the state has implemented in terms of how, how you can move more aggressively toward opening, fully opening in the process. Currently, we're at, in, in the purple and at tier one. And how do you, how do you get past tier one in order to move to tier two? You have to have two consecutive weeks where you have less than eight percent, at, at eight percent of one, eight percent per one hundred thousand. And your positivity rate is, is less... is, is less, is less, let's see, is less than, um, eight percent. So where we are right now in San Marino County, we're at six-point-seven cases per one-hundred-thousand, and our positivity rate is five-point-seven. We have one complete week of doing that, and we have to hold off for one more week before we can move to the next, to the next tier. Also, uh, the city's gonna be hosting a COVID-nineteen testing at the senior center, uh, Thursday, September twenty-fourth, from ten a.m. to two p.m. Appointments are preferred, but walk-ins are also accepted. Uh, and what's important is that we have to make sure that people understand, you do not have to have symptoms in order to be tested. You, you can, if you decide you wanna be tested, you can go in and be tested, and then, and the county encourages anyone, uh, to go and get tested just for, for their own, um, self-confidence and their own peace of mind. Uh, but what's important too is, the more healthy people are tested, the more the numbers are positive, and we can get moved to the next tier system. Then we have the city council approved COVID-nineteen programs, local programs in Grand Terrace. And so as the council's aware, the council started a business assistance program for sit-down restaurants. Uh, we currently have, uh, seven participants, uh, businesses in, that are participating in those programs. The total, um, the total revenues for that program was fifty-thousand dollars. Um, we will probably, um, have used less than that, maybe more like thirty-five thousand dollars. So that's something that we can consider in terms of either moving the money to a different program, or trying to reprogram it into another area. Your other program was your, uh, your CARES Act for small business grants, and that would be assisting the small business storefronts in terms of, uh, helping them, uh, with their, uh, with their, with their rent for their storefronts. And so we have thirteen applicants, applications submitted to date, uh, we anticipate getting a few more in. And so this is a program where we might wanna consider taking any excess money from the sit-down restaurants and moving it over to, uh, to this program. I'll bring information back to the council on that. Moving on to this Friday, we have, uh, movies in the park, but actually, it's gonna be called, it's a drive-up movie, uh, and it's gonna be at Richardson's RV at twelve-four-three-eight Michigan Avenue. And so tickets went on sale Friday for this particular, uh, movie, and they're all sold out. And so it should be a, a good event. There are tickets still available for, uh, Saturday's show, which is Ford versus Ferrari. Um, there's about, uh, twenty or so tickets left for people who can get online, and the event is on Eventbrite, and you can get on and get a ticket, and it'll, it will, very easily be able to access, there's no cost for the tickets. Uh, and it should be a fun night at, uh, for both of those nights, for those movies. Uh, and the snacks will be provided by Grocery Outlet, so when each car pulls up to the event, they'll be, they'll be checking in and also getting a snack pack from Grocery Outlet. Also, um, interesting, we're having a conversation today, but we recently submitted our, um, our grant to, for the slope stabilization, uh, through the state's O E S program, uh, and so it's been submitted, and we believe in the next ninety to one-hundred-and-twenty days, we should get some information back. This is our second submittal, uh, we submitted last year, uh, but last year, they had a particular target zone that most of the money went for. Uh, we're actually in the target zone this year, so we're hope, we're very hopeful that this application is going to, um, lead us to success in, of this particular grant.
That's a really nice picture of that hillside.
It is. Any questions for the council?
Councilmember Hussey, and then Councilmember Robles.
Mr. Duffy, on the movies, you know, it's really great, they're doing it, um, there's gonna be restrooms provided there?
Y- yes, there will be.
Okay. Just thought I'd ask, 'cause...
There'll be porta-potties.
Porta-potties, thank you.
Councilmember Robles?
You know, on, on that slope stabilization, um, you know, I had a com, recent conversation with someone, and the Gage Canal goes through there, I think the city of Colton has a part of it. Um, you know, Edison has its lines over it. I would think maybe you could get, um, um, an advocacy group together with our mayor and, and these, um, partners and see what, you know, I, I think Congressman, um...
Aguilar?
Aguilar, you know, ought to be, um, really concerned about this and really targeting this, and I think we need to make that, that case before him.
I believe we did make that case before him. We'll gotta do it again.
We did, but I think it's, you know, we, we were pretty good at going the second, third time around to get, to get what we need, but you're absolutely right, it's a significant, and there are, there should be lots of partnerships available, because it doesn't only affect Grand Terrace. As you said, Riverside Public Utilities, with the Gage, Gage Canal, city of Colton, um, the multiple agencies.
Yeah, and, you know, and some media on it, it'd be excellent.
I will say, though, that the congressman did encourage us to continue to put in an application anytime there was a federal emergency.
Well, I mean, he's really good at, with Planned Parenthood, so maybe he ought to be good on the slope.
Well, I, maybe we need to give him a tour of it.
Yeah. That's my report, Mayor.
Any further questions? All right. Well, we do not have a closed session tonight, so I will adjourn to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held Tuesday, October thirteenth, twenty-twenty, at six p.m. Any request to have an item placed on future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with the council procedures. We're adjourned.